Town of Prescott Valley, regular town council meeting, May 13th, 2021. Call to order, welcome everyone. At this time, I'd like to welcome down Pastor John Lutman from LifePoint Church. On location.
Join me in prayer. Father, we just pause on this evening to thank you for the many blessings you've given to us. Thank you for life and liberty, so many opportunities we've been given in this land and in this city. And we also want to thank you for those who lead and care for us. We thank you for Mayor Palguda, all of the council members, the different agencies that serve our city so faithfully. We pray for them, Lord. Earlier, you reminded me of the scripture, the word you gave through the prophet Jeremiah so long ago. It was this, "And seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have sent you. And pray to God for it, for in its peace and prosperity you will have peace and prosperity." We do that together, and we ask you, Lord, to give our leaders counsel, give them your wisdom and insight for the many challenges and tasks that lay before them. We ask for your great blessing to continue and to grow. Prescott Valley, every citizen, every family, every institution, may we acknowledge you and receive from you every good gift from your hand. We ask these things, Father, in Jesus's name, amen.
Well, folks, we have a little something different tonight. We have our pastor lead us off in the pledge, but we have some other individuals who, for the last 45 minutes, were drilling me with some very, very serious questions. So I'd like to welcome down the Boy Scouts to the front here. Come on down, guys. All right. Hats off, and remember, we're going to look at the flag. And on three, sir, on your call.
Two, one. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. The country called by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming out. Cook, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kinsinger?
Present.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Hepperty?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Councilmember Packard?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Present.
Mayor Palguda?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Jumping right into things, item 5A, student of the month. Councilwoman Heppertly will be taking this.
The Town of Prescott Valley, in collaboration with the Optimist Club of Yavapai County and Bradshaw Mountain High School, are honoring two outstanding students for the month of May. Please welcome Bailey Wilmeth. We're also recognizing Blair Hillegh, who was not able to make it. He's out of town for his sister's graduation from ASU. We are recognizing these students because of their school and community engagement, and they've been nominated by school staff and instructors at Bradshaw Mountain High School. Congratulations. Bailey Will, read your own biography.
When I was 14, I was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes and celiac disease. And when I was 15, my brother passed away. So my goal was to maintain my academic excellence in order to show people that you are stronger than your hardest battles. So I am very proud of all of the hard work that paid off, and I will be graduating with the AP Capstone Diploma. I have maintained a 4.0 and have been in AP and dual enrollment classes. On top of that, I have also taken CLEP tests and AP tests in order to receive college credit. I earned an AP Scholars Award for passing over three AP tests my junior year. Throughout high school, I have also been in both varsity cheerleading at BMHS and competitive cheerleading at Storm Elite. Of the 15 schools I applied to, I got accepted to all and have decided to go to Whitworth University in Spokane, Washington. I will be double majoring in biology for pre-med and sociology with a minor in religious studies. I have also recently made the Whitworth University Cheer Team and am excited to go there for the next four years.
Thank you, Bailey. And with us today, Assistant Principal, Mrs. Golagasky.
Thank you. Well, you heard all about Bailey. She, there's nothing else really for me to tell you, except how exceptional she is. She's a hard worker. She always has a smile on her face. She's welcoming to everybody. Even when I didn't think she knew who I was, she'd get up and talk to me. We have a love of Spokane, Washington, which is where she'll be going to with Whitworth. And Bailey is truly just an amazing bear, and she's really who we look to to represent all the ideals that we proudly have at Bradshaw Mountain High School. So thank you so much for honoring Bailey. She's awesome. And then we're also going to just mention Blair Hillegh, like she said. He is attending his sister's graduation today. But Blair also is a student who is the best of, some of our best, at Bradshaw Mountain High School. He also takes AP classes and pre-AP and dual enrollment. He's an athlete. He has invested in his school with his time and commitments to volunteer work and also heading to college. So two great examples of bears at Bradshaw Mountain High School. One more round of applause for them.
And Club Secretary and Treasurer, Mr. Michael Whiting.
Good evening. I'm here to stand in again for our president, Dr. Butch Miller. And he's actually training to become our state governor for Optimist International. So he's very busy right now, and that's why he's asked me to stand in. And this is, I think, our last presentation until August, when the new school year begins again. So congratulations, as one of our last but best students that are recognized through Bradshaw Mountain High School. So I'm here only to actually present you with a certificate and Optimist Creed as a small token of our appreciation and the fact that we are very proud of your achievements and accomplishments at Bradshaw Mountain High School. So let's go ahead and do that. I'll ask April to present that to you. We do have a tile, what I call, is the Optimist Creed. We have 10 different tenants that we talk about as far as being an optimist. And I read one off last time, and I thought I would today, too. One says, "To give so much time to the improvement of yourself that you have no time to criticize others." So if you live by the creed, I think you'll have a great time at college and at the university, and we hope to see you back here in Prescott Valley very soon. Congratulations.
All right. Moving on, item 5B, Brady Cabral, Chamber of Commerce, New Business. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I like to recognize just how easy I have it. We have somebody who is a little shy to get on the mic tonight. We have a brand-new business owner here in Prescott Valley, Karen Beaton of KB Services. Her and her family just moved to Prescott Valley in September. They opened business, well, she opened up shop and has been doing business in our beautiful community. I get the really easy part of just introducing her, so let's give her a really warm welcome so she feels comfortable talking to y'all.
Thank you for the opportunity to... Thanks for the opportunity to be able to share a little bit about myself and my business. My husband and I moved to Prescott Valley in September, and we just really are enjoying the small-town feel and the friendly community and, of course, the beautiful weather. I have been a bookkeeper for over 30 years, and my passion has always been to help small business owners. And so in 2007, I started KB Services. And since that time, I've been helping small businesses keep their finances up to date, learning how to read their financial statements, saving them money, allowing them time to work in their business, and learn quick books. So all these things really help the business make better financial decisions. And so I'm just really looking forward to meeting all the small business owners and helping them with their finances. And you can reach me at 530-305-1088, or my website is kb-bookkeepingservices.com. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And while I'm up here, I just want to thank practically each and every one of you for coming out and showing your support at Prescott Valley Days this weekend. We had a kind of a crazy weekend. We started off with the Ranch Table, which almost everybody was at. Then we went into our Fiesta del Pueblo on Friday, and on Saturday, we sort of did a family day from sunup to sundown, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We were out there and we were busy, and I just want to thank you all for coming out and showing your support. That event doesn't exist without the Town of Prescott Valley, so thank you very much. Thanks for making that happen, guys.
Thanks, Brady. You guys did amazing. Item 5C, I'd like to welcome up Yavapai College Women's Volleyball Champions. On ladies.
Congratulations to Yavapai College Rough Riders Women's Volleyball Team for being the first volleyball team from Yavapai College to complete the championship trifecta, which is conference, region, and district. This prestigious accomplishment occurred on April 3rd when the ladies won the NJCAA Southwest B District Championship against the Hill College Volleyball Texas Team. The Rough Riders had a long winning streak with a total of 12 wins and obtained several accolades along the way, such as the ACCAC Championship, Region 1 Championship, and Southwest B District Championship, to name a few. In times of uncertainty, they were able to pull through to where they are now due to dedication, tenacity, leadership, and teamwork throughout the season. Head Coach Sack Shaver was voted Coach of the Year by his peers and has been a beacon of leadership to his team. It is with great pride and respect that we honor Head Coach Sack Shaver, Assistant Coach Jordan Biggett, and the entire Yavapai College Women's Volleyball Team for their success of the championship trifecta to bring home to Prescott Valley.
We definitely want to say thank you to everybody at the college, especially those that came out and supported us, even though numbers were limited as far as spectators early on, and our administration, all the way up from Dr. Ryan through our vice presidents and to our athletic director, Mr. Clifford. Because without their leadership through this pandemic and all of the countless hours in meetings and protocol development that they put in, we wouldn't have been able to compete this season. And Yavapai College Volleyball has been successful in the past, won the conference, won the region, or won the district, but was never able to do all three in the same year. So it was definitely a special year, and I think it's one that we'll all remember and cherish for a long time. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Going to mention before they leave, I wanted to thank the volleyball team, women's volleyball team, for showing up for the team-up to clean up with the chamber event and handing out, helping to serve the hot dogs and pizza that afternoon, that morning and afternoon. Thank you so very much. It was so nice to have you there.
Thank you. We're going to kind of interrupt a little bit on this, and before we get to council comments, Casey, would you please come down? I thought it was important that we have Casey kind of outline it in regards to some grants as opposed to us pointing them out. Casey, it's a great accomplishment and...
Thank you. Mayor, Council, it's been, it's wonderful to announce that the library has received over $54,000 in what's called Library Services Technology Act grants. These are grants through the Arizona State Library Archives and Public Records, and these are not grants that are just given out to whoever. It's a process. It's a tiring process. It's a difficult process, and it's very competitive. And we received seven, and that was huge. And it doesn't go to me. It goes to my staff. Ladies, stand up. Come on, stand up! These ladies, Michelle, Jocelyn, Ruby, and Autumn, took a, we did an internal workshop, writing grant workshop. Michelle and I have been the only ones who've been writing grants for the library. So I'm busy, so we had to pass that information to them. So I require that each of them write a grant. Well, Michelle's an overachiever, and she did four, of course. Ruby did two with the help of Michelle. Autumn did one. Jocelyn did one, but unfortunately, she did not get hers. But that's okay, because we can do it in-house. And it wasn't because she didn't write it well. It was, I'm sure they're like, "Oh, they already have seven. That's enough. We're cutting you off." But kudos to them. They went through the whole process and did an amazing job writing these grants. Obviously, we received a lot of them. And just to let you know, go virtual. We got more money for Wi-Fi hotspots, which are a huge need in this community. We have 15, so this will allow us to continue to offer that service. Tween Scene, which is the big one, the $30,000 one, which will give us a space for our tweens, which are the 9 to 13 group, which we found there is a gap in service to that group of kids. And already, Ruby's doing an amazing job offering program to that, to that group. We have really missed the mark on that. Grow and Create, which will be... Seed, a seed library, sorry, I couldn't think of it. So we'll be lending seeds out to the community to grow, garden. College and Career Exploration for Teens. Takey Takey Makey Makey, which is STEM. And then Steam Explosion, which is another STEM grant, which is needed in this community. So I couldn't be more proud of the staff and the hard work that they've done. The writing's the hard part, but going forward and programming these grants does take a lot of time, too, and I couldn't be more proud of them, so.
Casey, awesome. Great job, guys.
Do you have to return those seeds after you check them out?
Yes, you do. They're three weeks old.
All right, starting with council comments, Councilman Kissinger, you have anything?
Nothing tonight, sir.
No, just after a great weekend of all the things that were offered with our town, it's been a real good time to get together with everyone again.
Councilman, Vice Mayor.
So in item 7B, under consent, our TPT, or sales tax, has increased from 2020 to 2021, $3 million increase. So this is helpful as we are in the throes of our budget planning. And I want to give kudos to Casey as that was a competitive process, and they got seven of the eight grants. And in Casey's words, "It's a really big deal that we are receiving $54,000 in grant funding." And Casey, we so appreciate your leadership, mentorship, and wisdom. And then also, under 7P, council's accepting an award for $64,000 to go towards the purchase of two motorcycles and the equipment that they need. So we'll have some motorcycles back in the area. And I want to thank everybody who attend a fabulous Teacher of the Year event, where proceeds go to classroom grants and scholarships. If you missed it and would like to donate for these programs, or the Hungry Kid Fund, where we feed 180 kids weekend meals every weekend, go to humboldteducationfoundation.org. And then our Arbor Day was a blast, thanks to Community Services and Desert Financial Credit Union. And at Antelope and Mountain Valley Parks, we planted 34 trees worth over $4,500. And I would like to thank everybody who turned out for Prescott Valley Praise on May 6. Mark your calendars for next year. Prescott Valley Praise, which is the National Day of Prayer, will be on May 5th, 2022.
Awesome. Councilman?
This Saturday at Mountain Valley Park, that's the big one, at Robert Road and Luce, we are having the inaugural three-on-three basketball tournament. This was a joint effort by the Prescott YMCA, Dignity Health, YRMC, Matforce, and the Town of Prescott Valley. Registration is closed. We have the teams. The brackets are set. We just need support and cheerleaders, not just on Saturday, but year-round, to help the Matforce fight against fentanyl in our area. So come out, cheer on. I don't care if you don't know anyone, if you've never watched basketball, if you don't like basketball, because you know what you really don't like? Kids dying of fentanyl. So just come out and join the community for three-on-three hoops tournament this Saturday, starting at 9:00, 9:00 to 4:00. And, I can't believe I forgot that. That was my baby.
I can't believe you forgot it either.
At noon, we have an exhibition game with PVPD and CAFMA, Central Fire. I like to call it a guns and hoses match, so three-on-three, just for fun. Although I think CAFMA is actually entered. There, I saw them in the bracket. So hopefully, the PVPD guys don't actually have to play those guys. So hopefully, the PVPD guys don't actually have to play those guys who are also signed up competitively. Good luck. So definitely, you don't want to miss that. Thank you.
Councilman?
Well, we have an awesome community, that's for sure, with all the things that we have done over the last few weeks. I'm going dizzy with all the stuff that we have done. I would like to thank CAFMA for hosting us in the Prescott Valley Days Parade and carrying us on top and inside their vehicle. It was a great time that was had by all. And Lori, our Vice Mayor, and April handed out books from First Things First and candy. And I believe that the kids were very receptive. And thank you again, CAFMA, for hosting us. Coffee with the Cops was back in fine order yesterday. And Mike, thank you so much for being there and meeting everybody. It was a great time. And Kendall brought Jerry out for the first time, and we were so happy to see Jerry back and that he's doing well. I'd also like to recognize one of the bears out of nine scholarship recipients from the 2021 Republican Women of Prescott Scholarship recipients. Peter Kelly, from the Bradshaw Mountain High School, received out of the nine, he was the only one from Prescott Valley that received, pardon me, from Bradshaw Mountain High School, that received a scholarship. And this young man is so impressive. Pre-law political science will be his major as he attends either ASU or North Carolina State University. So I want to recognize Peter Kelly. And the last thing I want to say is that Lori is very humble. She was the one that organized the breakfast, the prayer breakfast for us this last week, and it was a huge success. There were half a dozen pastors from around the community there. And we had so many people praying, including Mary Mallory, our Board of Supervisor, and Jerry Ferguson from the Police Department, presented a beautiful poem on "It's Not Normal." If you have not ever heard that poem, I believe that it is online. He told me that he got it from another source in 2017. But anyway, it was just so impressive, and thank you, Lori, for putting that together for all of us. It just really inspired me. Thank you so much.
Moving on, Item 7, Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Council, we've all had a chance to review. If there's any items to be removed, please do so now. If not, please make a motion. Got any motion, council?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as stated tonight. Tucker?
Clerk, please call the vote.
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 8, Old Business Amendment to Town Code, Chapter 12, Flood Plane Management. This will be the second reading.
An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the Town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference a document entitled Amendments to Chapter 12 Flood Plane Management, declared by Resolution Number 2182 to be a public record, which amends Chapter 12 Flood Plane Management of the Town Code, providing that all other chapters, articles, sections, and subsections of the Town Code, not hearing repealed, replaced, or amended, shall remain in full force and effect, providing that if any provisions in this ordinance is held invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remaining provisions shall not be affected, but shall continue in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Clerk, shall this ordinance pass?
The pass is unanimously, Mayor.
Thanks, ma'am. Item 9, Zoning Map Change, DMC 21-001, Bungalows on Market Street. It's a public hearing. Open it up at this time. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Ed Packard with Planning Department here in Prescott Valley. This is zoning map change 21-001, a request for a zoning change from PAD C2 to PAD RS, RSPAD zoning. I'll bring up the presentation. I'll bring up this aerial map here. The request for rezoning is for this area, of an area that was formerly zoned, or is currently zoned, PAD C2, C2 PAD, and his request is to RSPAD. In the area, there is the terraces apartments basically across the street and a little bit to the west, which is also originally PAD, C2 PAD. It was rezoned to RSPAD back in about 2000, I believe. In the area also is the Kia dealership up on the hill that you see, and the hotel there in that area. It's 11, just over 11 acres. Requested is the 112 multifamily units. It's something you've seen before. It's a development that, the property owner is Cabin Development, and they are currently, they just started construction on a development down that, at the corner of 169 and 69 for a similar multifamily development, which is, it's not apartment-style, but it's more of single-family units that will be leased. There is a breakdown, I believe, in your packet of the proposed units. 32 are proposed to be one-bedroom, 49 will be two-bedroom, and 31 will be three-bedroom units. The application was presented before the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were some concerns. I will bring up the presentation again. Here's a site plan that was included in your packet. Shows the units. The development has one entrance off of Market Street on the north here. Has Great Western Drive on the east, and a circulation driveway going through the entire development in a circular pattern there. This is what the landscape plan looks like, fully landscaped. This exhibit was not in your packets, but the, because of the discussion after Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant prepared this for this evening's hearing. I will go over those briefly. The issues that came up with the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. First was that there was, this development is a little bit different because there's only one proposed ingress and egress here on Market Street. Typically, you would see two ingress and egress points of access on a development like this. There are unique challenges in this site because of the slope and the grading and drainage and the cut and fill that's going to be required to construct this site. If you look at Section CC, it shows, this will be the units up here. There will be a series of retaining walls and terraces coming down. And then this is Great Western Drive down here at the bottom of the slope. So you can see the amount of cut and fill that's going to be required to construct this site. And it would be very difficult to put a driveway on Great Western Drive. Another issue that came up were the half-streets that were going to be required to be constructed with this development. Up in Section AA here on this, on this exhibit, you can see the, what's existing and what's proposed. Right now, there is only a 24-foot-wide pavement section of the street with no curb, gutter, sidewalk at all. So what is, what is proposed, the developer will be constructing his, the half-streets of Great Western Drive and Market Street adjacent to his site. So that's along Market Street here and along Great Western Drive over here. And what is proposed is, the right-of-way is already existing there. It's 60 feet wide. So he'll be constructing within the existing right-of-way, putting in additional, he's responsible for the half-street, but the existing street goes beyond the half-street. So he'll be adding, well, there will be a 10-foot turn lane, a 14-foot travel lane, a 5-foot bike lane, and a 5-foot sidewalk, all within that. So when it's all, when their half-street is built, there actually be about 36 feet of pavement with the additional, with the existing asphalt that they'll be adding on to. And then there was also an issue with parking. There was some concern about, in that area, with the terraces apartments. Some of their overflow parking is out on the street, and I understand it gets a little busy out there. They do meet the code requirements for parking, which is included in your packet. But a one-bedroom unit is required, one and a half spaces per unit. A two-bedroom unit and three-bedroom units are two spaces per unit required. So there's 200, total with the, with the clubhouse slash leasing office, there is 217 required spaces, and they provide 220 spaces. I did do a little bit of research on the terraces to find out exactly why their development doesn't park onsite as much as it should. Mostly, I think it's, Prescott Valley code doesn't require as much parking as most municipalities. A lot of municipalities, parking is not per unit required, but per bedroom. And so when you get into three-bedroom units, there is an additional parking space required sometimes for those units. It's not required by the Town of Prescott Valley zoning code. I'll show also one thing. If you notice up here at the terraces apartments, it's a very deep development. They don't have much frontage at all on the street. Some of the frontage is taken up by their two driveways. And so when you do have overflow parking out on the street, you have a lot of residents from that deep space. They don't have much frontage. And so it spills out a whole lot more onto the street than, say, this bungalows on Market Street has a whole lot more street frontage to accommodate that overflow parking. The Planning and Zoning, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning. They did also approve the preliminary development plan at the hearing. They did want to see the final development plan brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, or to the Planning and Zoning Commission at a hearing. You will also see the final development plan brought to you when they, when they get it designed and is submitted to the town. But with that, staff has recommended approval also of the rezoning with the two included stipulations. That's included in your packet. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to open it up to public comment. It's already been opened, but I just want to make sure, invite anyone that wishes to speak about this topic to come on down at this moment. Doesn't look like there's anyone there. Don't go anywhere yet, sir. We're still going to need you up here. All right, council, we have an opportunity now to ask some questions as well. Vice Mayor?
So, thank you for providing the answers to the questions that Planning and Zoning had. I watched that meeting. I was really proud of our Planning and Zoning Commission. They came up with a lot of comments. Many of those comments couldn't be answered at that meeting, so I'm glad that you were able to answer them tonight for us. I appreciate the cross-section. I think they'll be excited to see that when you take the final map back. So that's great. Thank you, Ed. I am really concerned, I guess I need to talk to Kavanaugh about this, right? That's you, sir? I'm really concerned that we only have one entrance and one exit for this project. I know it's only 10 acres. I know it's a small project. But as the Planning Commission discussed, and almost all of them did, it would be much better for our new residents that live there to have two ingresses and two egresses. I appreciate that it's a gated community. I appreciate all of the public improvements that they're making. It's going to make that area look really nice. But if you look down at the, at the second AA on Great Western, where it's flat there, is there no possibility to do a one-way in and one-way out, or a right-in and a right-out there?
Come on up, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, my name's Mark Reddy. I'm with RVI, Planning and Landscape Architecture. I'm representing the developers, the applicant. Thank you for having me here tonight. And, yeah, so we've designed about 20 of these communities throughout the state of Arizona over the last five years. Kevin's one of the first developers that has really implemented this product. It's become very popular around the state of Arizona and is really growing nationally. And so we've got a lot of experience with it. And typically, when we develop these products, if we're under 200 units, we only provide typically one entry in and out. And one of the things that's unique about this is that our entries are all designed to provide two-way traffic on both sides of the center median. So if you look at the entry, it's about a 60-foot-wide entry. So it's literally the size of a collector road. With a median in the middle, each travel lane is 20 feet wide, which can accommodate two-way traffic. So if there was ever an incident on either the entry or the exit, you could open up the other side as two-way traffic, so that vehicles could get in and out. The other thing that I would say about it is that we did a traffic study, and we talked a lot about that at the Planning Commission hearing. This project is less than half the unit count of the terraces, which is just up the road. So it's a very relatively small project in terms of multifamily development. The total trips on a 24-hour period are 806. Half of those are inbound, half of those are outbound. So if you think about it, there's about 400 trips per day. During the peak hour, the traffic studies, they look at the peak hour, which is the time where there's the most vehicles in the morning and the most vehicles in the evening. And during the peak hour, in the morning, we have 12 total trips in one hour coming into the community and 41 total trips coming out. So that means in the morning, when people are leaving for work, at the highest peak, you'll have 41 trips leaving the community in a 60-minute period, which is about one car per 87 seconds. And then on the return trip in the PM, the peak is similar. On the inbound in the PM, it's 41 trips coming in and 24 trips coming out. So if you think about that in terms of traffic capacity and the need for a second entry, those numbers of trips really don't support or justify needing two entries. And because of the topography, what we did, and the cross-sections kind of show it, it's actually Section CC that you see. Our site, I actually wrote these finished floor elevations down here. Our site, the finished floor elevations of our west, of our easternmost units are at 5307 to 5300. So they drop down seven feet from the north end to the south end. The road grade is at 5280, and it's consistent around the whole, the whole length of the, of the development. So at its lowest point, it's 20 feet above grade. And at its highest point, it's 27 feet above grade. And so to get a driveway and the angle of it, it just doesn't work from a grading perspective to get a safe driveway through there. And we feel very comfortable, I know that the town staff looked at the traffic study, and they support the single entry. We've talked to the fire department about it. Typically, if you're over 100 units, you either have to have a second entry, or you have to sprinkler the buildings. And so we've agreed to sprinkler all the buildings as an additional safety measure and to meet the fire code requirements. But from a traffic safety standpoint, we feel very confident and comfortable, as does the staff that reviewed it, that the single entry is acceptable for the size of this development. But I hope that, I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor, so am I not looking at this right? But the AA on Market, where you can have an ingress and egress, is pretty flat in the rendering. And the AA off of Great Western, then, is going to be... And the AA off of Great Western then is gonna be flat again?
The, I'm sorry, the, the AA is just the road section itself. So it's just the right-of-way. So our site slopes up after you get out of the right-of-way.
Okay, gotcha.
Market Street, the interesting thing is Great Western's relatively flat from the south end to the north end, but Market Street elevates about 25 to 30 feet. And the way we're grading the site is we're cutting the, we're cutting the west half and we're filling the east half. And so where our entry is, is where we meet the grade of the road. So the, the reason that the entry is there is because at that point, our site is at the same grade as Market Street at that location. So at the west end, Market Street is much higher than our site and at the intersection, it's much lower, but where our driveway is, it actually lines up at the exact grade point of how we're grading the site. So that's why that entry works in its location.
I wasn't, I was, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, the, the section AA is just the right-of-way.
Right, okay, I got it.
It doesn't include the site itself.
I'm just trying to figure out, where, it was Castle Golf on this location? Is this the same location? I'm, I don't think, where's, where's Castle Golf in regards to this location? Where the hotel is?
In that area, I believe so, where Full Swing Sports is in the hotel, I believe that's where Castle Golf was.
I just wanna know that, cause I know, I'm pretty confident you went to Castle Golf off of Great Western to get on there. Cause I think it goes pretty high up a, a steep path. And the only reason, reason I'm saying that is there was entry to Castle Golf off Great Western and Market Street never existed for Castle Golf. And I'm just trying to find out that, on how that lays out, how did, how did they make it work?
The site actually, s, s, our site, at the north end, it's much higher than the south end.
Sure.
So as you get further south, you get closer to the grade of Market Street. As you get further north, you get higher and, and it gets more difficult. So I'm not sure exactly where that facility is, but if it's further to the south, they're much closer to the grade.
It was plowed under and I thought it was on this site, that's why I brought it up.
It, I think that it was just a little bit more south, I remember the road being quite a bit more south. So it's very close.
And it almost looks like, I wonder if that, if we're looking at down there, if that was the road, you almost see a road if that was in fact why.
Because I remember that it was not well paved, it was maybe chip seal at most.
Right. Um, in regards to the number of units you have, what was your max number of units you were allowed on that property?
Um, in terms of the zoning?
In, in terms of, of parking and what you're able to put there?
Oh, yeah, no, great question, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, um, because of our experience with this product, we've got a number of projects that are fully leased and we've done a lot of studies on determining how much parking we actually need, because we look at our parking requirements and any city's parking requirements and we make sure that we meet both. And what we've determined through the several projects that we have that are fully operational is that we need about one parking space per bedroom. So if we have a three-bedroom unit, we need three parking spaces. If we have a two-bedroom unit, we need two, and if we have a one-bedroom unit, we need one. Overall, that averages out to provide all of the parking that we need for the demographic that we provide within this project. And right now, we are exceeding that requirement, our requirement of one parking space per bedroom. We're also exceeding the town's requirement. So our parking needs are quite a bit different. I think one of the main differences, on top of what Ed mentioned, is that the terraces, as I understand it, has a lot of students that live there and a lot of students don't have as much money and they share bedrooms. And so you might have a two-bedroom unit with three or four students in it, every one of them has a car. And so you tend to have a lot more cars in those garden-style apartments where you've got a lot of students. This particular community, we don't expect a lot of students in this community for a couple of reasons. One, the rents are substantially higher, um, than a traditional multi-story apartment complex. These are designed more like little single-family homes and so the rents are more expensive, so students typically aren't gonna be able to lease these units, um, and, and be able to afford them as much as, say, a young family would. And so the, our average demographic for a three-bedroom unit is four people with two drivers.
What's your projected rent, sir?
Uh, the projected rents, I honestly don't know in this market. I know that what, um, what our demographic, um, researchers have told us is that our rents are about 15, 10 to 15% higher than a traditional multi-story apartment complex. So every market's different and I don't know exactly, we don't have one built in Prescott Valley yet, we have one that's under construction now, but we haven't defined the lease rates yet, so I don't know exactly what they're gonna be. But I know on average, they're about 10 to 15% higher than a similar apartment complex that's designed in an attached environment.
So are you gonna know that before you come back to council?
I could, I could certainly find out, um, what that would be.
I'm sure if you're talking, if you're to this point, you guys have an idea of how it's gonna pencil out, I'm guessing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the land planner, I'm not the financier and the investor, so I don't deal with that side of the business, but I could certainly ask my client and find out and get information to you.
I have a quick question too. Um, you said it's a gated community, does that mean there's a fence around the entire perimeter?
Yes.
And then will there be, um, access for them to walk through gates or anything like that, or pass through so that if they wanna go hiking off of that area?
Yeah, we provide pedestrian gates in all of our facilities.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you.
We have a dog park in the, in the facility as well.
Oh, nice, okay.
Yeah, so 208 parking spaces were required and you're doing 216, so you're doing eight extra.
Correct.
So then, I know one of the things that came up at Planning and Zoning is that, um, it is that, and I didn't get to ask you this ahead of time, Stephen, but is there a way to condition the change of zone and/or when the final map goes back to Planning and Zoning, that we put in there that their sprinklers must be monitored because they're not required to be monitored? I don't know if that's a change of zone condition or if it's a...
As I understand it, you, you said that you guys were, um, self-imposing the sprinklers?
That's correct.
So is that, are, are we requiring that as part of the zoning condition?
As I understand it, it's a development standard that's part of the zoning code, part of the fire code.
Okay.
International fire code requires either two points of access or sprinklers, so it's a, it's a code requirement, not a legislative requirement.
Right, so they're not offering it, it's either, once you get past 100, you either have to sprinkler or have a different, a second driveway. So they're choosing to sprinkler. What I'm saying is that those sprinklers are not required to be monitored. And so what I would like to add, and I would think that would lower your fire insurance, I, what I'm asking is, would you agree to have them monitored?
Well, we've never done that in any of our communities and I don't know what that entails. I know that we have 24-hour management, um, that is either onsite or accessible 24 hours a day. I think most, um, buildings that are sprinkled around the state don't have active monitoring systems associated with them, so I honestly, I don't know what that means in terms of how that would work. Uh, we've never done it before on any of our projects, nor any of the residential subdivisions that we've developed where we have some kind of an active monitoring system. So I, I, I don't know that, um, I, I would be uncomfortable agreeing to that because I don't know what that means and if that's even an option, uh, in terms of what we've done. I'm, I have not seen that before. I know it was brought up at Planning Commission, but I've ne, I've not heard of that being done before.
Well, I hope it, when it comes back to us, that that's in there.
Usually in the construction industry, I've always known to have fire extinguisher, uh, inspections done by the fire department and I believe because this is part of fire extinguisher equipment, that it is monitored by the fire department. So I do believe they're gonna be, um, having checks on it for pressure and everything else. They do have to show that it does meet, um, code on everything.
Yeah, I think what the Planning Commission was indicating was having the sprinkler system somehow connected to like the 911 emergency response, so that if a sprinkler goes off, it automatically contacts 911. And, and I don't know if, you know, a lot of times these things go off because somebody has smoke in their kitchen and, so I, I don't know what that means in terms of how that would, how that monitoring system would work, I'm just not familiar with that. We can certainly research that.
I believe they're more heat-related than they are smoke-related too, so I'm not drawn that way.
But we, we could look that up and, and come back when we come with the development plan, um, and address that at that time.
I have a comment. Mr. Packard, um, commented about the overflow of traffic, um, or parking from the terraces on Market Street, uh, because they do not have sufficient, sufficient parking for those who live in those complexes, or in that complex. So, um, in, if there were, and you were saying that, um, uh, the double A, um, the AA, um, portion was like a collector road, uh, for traffic on Market Street? So, um, if in, in the case of an emergency of any nature, um, is there, um, how would the, I, I know that they would probably, the traffic would be going out, the only way in and out that I understand is on Great Western?
Market Street.
Or on Market Street. Okay, so, uh, back to what Lori was commenting about, um, if, um, there was an emergency, a wildfire or anything up in that area, I, I, I'm just foreseeing a, a collection of traffic on Market Street due to the terrorists park, the people parking on that street and , um, just, uh, a difficulty, uh, getting out of that area. Am I envisioning this wrong?
Well, um, no, but I, I, what I would say is that part of the problem with the on-street parking, the overflow from the terraces, is that the roadway is built to a rural section, they, it's not all improved right now. And so there's a, it's a 24-foot pavement strip as opposed to a full build-out of a collector road. And what we're doing is we're adding the entire half-street, so we're increasing the width of the existing pavement from 24 feet to 36 feet, plus adding the curb gutter and sidewalk on our side on both Market Street and Great Western. And then when the developments to the north and to the east develop, they would be adding their additional half-street improvements for an ultimate build-out of 48 feet of right, of, of pavement and a 60-foot right-of-way section. And I think what happened is because the terraces were built way up at the top and they had such a small frontage on the road, they were only required to build out their little frontage. And on the other side, and, and because of their two driveways, there's nowhere to park on that frontage. So they're parking on the opposite side of the street where there's no improvements. And that's where the problem is. And we're, we're, we're helping to solve that problem with this project because we're gonna be improving our entire segment of Market Street and Great Western to a full build-out condition on our side, which will widen the pavement and alleviate the problem. So I think it'll actually, it'll help significantly from what's going on today. But, but I've been out there a couple times and, you know, and I know that Ed and staff probably has more experience with this than me, but in the experience I've had, there's not a lot of cars overflowing, there's a few and they're all right up in that area around the cul-de-sac. They're not spilling out into where our project is located at this point, so.
I was a guest up in the terraces and I know, uh, parking was a premium, not only for those who live there, but for anybody that came to visit anybody up there, it was very hard to find a place to park.
Right. And we've been very careful, um, you know, we find that with our renters, especially with a more luxury, premium product, if we don't have enough parking, we can't lease the product. And so we've been very careful to make sure that we meet the parking requirements and we've done a lot of research on that and we feel very comfortable that we are gonna have 100% of the parking that we need. We weren't, we're not gonna have any spillover onto the street. Absolutely confident.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pepperly.
So there's, that's a pretty good hill from the terraces entrance to your entrance, right? I think, I mean, from what you're saying, you've already kind of addressed this, but where the overflow parking is happening right now is right across from the terraces. People wouldn't, even once you improve that and there's more parking down there, it's gonna be, you know, someone parked, from the terraces parked down in front of your facility, they're gonna be hiking uphill pretty good to get there. So if you have that improved section there on Market Street and then the people that live in your facility are just coming in and out on Great Western, they can completely avoid whatever may be happening with the parking situation at the terraces.
Our residents, yes.
Yes.
Yes, because we're downstream of that issue.
So they can avoid that whole thing. Okay, that's all, thank you.
It's time, if there's no other questions from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to item 9B, zoning map change, CMC 21-001, bungalows on Market Street, first reading.
Can I get a motion for, you read twice?
My apologies. Yes, I'll need a motion for the first reading.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, read ordinance number 890, first reading. I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote.
That passes unanimously. Ordinance number 890. An ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, amending the town zoning map, CMC 21-001, by changing the zoning classification of parcels from C2PAD, Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development, to RSPAD, Zoning, Residential and Services Planned Area Development, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thanks, ma'am. Item 9C, Series 18 Craft Distillery Liquor License, Colt Barbecue and Spirits, public hearing, we'll open it up. Welcome, sir.
Vice Mayor, Council? My name's Carson, I had the construction development for Colt Grill or Barbecue and Spirits. Uh, recently, um, I've gone ahead and purchased the distillery from Colt Grill, gonna be making the transition over to distilling and having a little bit more fun. Um, and so, I'd just like to brief you guys on that, we have a small location on 2970 where our current restaurant is. We have a room that's sep, uh, separate from the existing building with its own egress and, uh, exits. Uh, we have our own water, our own facilities, all that good stuff in there. Um, we've already obtained our license, so we're just doing a transfer over to it. We have a small still, um, we've only done test batches and things like that, just to get it going, cause we're not quite ready to sell to a public or, or anything of that sort. But, uh, yeah, we're just going to be having small batch, small craft kind of things, not, nothing large, substantial or commercial, but something more of a fun element that we can kinda do and add to that whole area of that, of our plaza in there.
No, absolutely. Council, you have any questions?
Justin, I love Colts. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
And we had already approved their license to distill earlier this year, so you're just trying to break off now separately, so, pretty clear. Any questions or comments from the public? This is also your opportunity to come and comment in regards to this. Doesn't look like we have anyone, and if there's no other questions from council, we'll close the public hearing. Item 9D, new Series 18 Craft Distillery, Distiller Liquor License, Colt Barbecue and Spirits.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of a Series 18 Craft Distill Liquor License for Colt Barbecue and Spirits located on 2970 North, North Park Avenue through applicant Carson Closeen, uh, by electronic vote.
Second. How much they like this right here, sir, that's, doesn't happen that often. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Sir, good luck.
Thank you, folks, appreciate your time.
Item 9E, Antelope Park Spray Pad Tank Approval. Bobby? Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, uh, thank you so much for having me. Uh, wanted to propose a budget transfer to fund a deposit for another holding tank for the proposed spray pad that's gonna be going at Antelope Park in fiscal year 2122. Um, we are running into some shipping delays, we're finally gonna be getting the tank for the Bob Edward Spray Pad, um, the last week of May. So they did order two of them, came across the pond from Germany and we wanted to put a deposit so we didn't lose out and missed the construction window to hopefully get it to be open with the second spray pad in September of this year. So looking for approval on that budget transfer.
Just being a little optimistic that gets through budget, huh?
Very much optimistic.
Well, that's a, a safe bet, I believe, but we'll see. Any questions for Bobby?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve a budget transfer from operating accounts to capital accounts in the Community Services Department in the amount of $4,500 for the Antelope Park Spray Pad Tank by electronic vote.
I second it.
Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you, and I just wanna let you know, Bobby, every time you come up here for something with a spray pad, it's gonna be a yes from me.
It's gonna be, okay, that's what I needed to hear, we're gonna have spray pads everywhere.
Just mark that, mark that down right there, so.
Thank you guys so much, we appreciate it.
Exciting.
All right, item 9F, memorandum of understanding, Prescott Valley Police Officers Association ratification. Uh, Mr. Judy, are you taking this one?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, Council, in the town code, we have a meet and confer process with the town management and the Prescott Valley Peace Officers Association, PVPOA. Uh, a lot of times when you think of collective bargaining, you think of people in suits and, uh, people that lawyer up, uh, that's not ever been the case with Prescott Valley and our, our police officers, it's a very amicable relationship. And we like to meet on occasion, we have the ability to meet annually... meet annually to discuss pay and benefits. We've gone several years without ever meeting, but we did feel a need to meet with them this year. And some of the deal points that are being proposed in this agreement are, one, to increase the field training officer pay from $25 a week to $1 per hour. So normally, that would be $40 a week. We're also increasing specialty pay from $50 from the current fiscal year to $75 next fiscal year. That would escalate to $100 the following fiscal year. Two other benefits that we are proposing to change is allowing board members of the association to have 100 hours essentially collectively to meet or attend conferences or trainings. And the last proposed benefit is what we call the general leave buyback program. That's where if employees have at least 80 hours of general leave on the books, they can start to redeem those hours at one point, at one point during the year. They have to have 120 hours on the books, and they can redeem 40 hours. That is a benefit town-wide, not just for the police department. So that's what we're talking about this year. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I think it's pretty clear, Ryan, but some of these things were already in place years ago, and then kind of went away due to budget restrictions. And now they're slowly working their way back in. And it's something important that we need to do to make sure that our police department stays competitive with other departments throughout, not only the area, but all of Arizona.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the Memorandum of Understanding Negotiation between the Prescott Valley Police Officers Association and the town manager for fiscal year 202122 by electronic vote.
I second. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 9G, Construction Monkswell Waterline, CIP number S471.8A, bid awarded. Mr. Wadsworth?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to say, this is associated with a splashpad?
All right, one in my neighborhood.
Only if there's a leak, right? Only if there's a big leak.
All right. I've been up here and previously spoken to you about the Monkswell, and you're all very familiar with this. So obviously, we have a little bit of work to do to get this thing constructed. And so the first contract that I have in front of you tonight is for the construction of the water line and the electrical conduits, about 2,400 linear feet. And we took bids on that, and we, the lowest bid was from Earth Resources Corporation at $283,517. And since we have talked about this previously, I guess I would just open it up to any questions that you might have.
I think we spoke in depth on it last time you were here, sir. But Council, if there's anything that came up, here's our opportunity to ask Mr. Wadsworth.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion.
Ma'am.
Motion to award a bid to the lowest responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation, and enter into a construction contract for the Monkswell water line in an amount of, in an amount up to $283,517 by electronic vote.
I'll second. Clerk, please call the vote.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
All right, moving on to Item 9H, purchase of and installation of Monkswell equipment, CIP number S471.8B. Mr. Wadsworth?
Thank you. So this is the second project. And this one is, although works towards getting the well equipped, it's also kind of a temporary installation. But what we are doing is we're buying the pump and motor and all of the underground electrical stuff, and we're throwing it into the well right now before we even build the building and all the above-ground piping. And so doing this now will give us the ability to operate the pump in an emergency situation. So if we need the water prior to the rest of the project being done, which has not been fully designed yet, we'll be able to get out there with a large generator, power the well, or the pump and motor up, and be able to put water into the pipeline that is also being constructed ahead of schedule. So after tonight, at some point, there will be a third project to do the final clipping and above-ground piping. But this is for just the pump and the local stuff right at the wellhead. And we received three bids on that, and the low bid was Drill Tech in the amount of $126,896.1. So I guess I'll answer any additional questions at this time.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Motion to award the bid to the lowest responsive bidder, Drill Tech, Inc., and enter into a contract for Monkswell equipment in an amount up to $126,896.1 by electronic vote.
I'll second.
Clerk, call the vote, please.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. I made a promise to Mr. Judy tonight that we'd be getting out by 6:45, so he doesn't miss his daughter's graduation. So I'm not going to read comments from the public. If there's anyone out there that wishes to speak, stand up and come on down. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Clerk, call the vote.
That passes unanimously.
And let the record show, there was four people, six people in the audience, and majority were employees. Thanks, guys.